All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 24th of 2025. We'll call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. Jennifer, it's to you.
Commissioner Alcaraz.
President.
Commissioner Winn. Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. On item three, review of the agenda, is anything arisen that we need?
Yes, so on item six B, that item, we're requesting to continue that until October 22nd.
Okay. The specific plan amendment SPA 2025 dash zero zero two, the resolution recommending the Seaside City Council. So should we address that and and move for a continuance on that now? Or are we going to just address it when we get to the item in sequence? Do we have to vote for a continuance?
Why don't we do it when we get to the item?
Okay, that's fine. So we just, you're just making us aware of the fact that we're not going to hear it tonight and we will. You're requesting a continuance when we get to it. Perfect.
Correct.
Okay. Public comment, period. For members of the public wishing to address the Commission on Matters within the jurisdiction of the City of Seaside, but items that are not on tonight's agenda, we'll offer you the podium for up to three minutes to do that. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on items not agendized for tonight? Looks like we have no takers. Is there anything online?
No one online.
Okay, perfect. Item five, we're gonna approval of the minutes from the July 9th, 2025 meeting. Do we have any comments or discussions or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 9th, 2025.
Okay, second. Second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
And we'll note that Commissioner La Micah abstained because he wasn't here for that meeting. All right, moving on to item number six, use permit application number UP 2025 dash zero zero eight. James Dillon, Jim Gish, Inc., project applicant, and Ryan and Megan Bassett, property owners, request approval of a use permit. Application UP 2025 dash O A for the reduction of parking requirement for adding 523 square feet of new floor area to the existing 918 square foot, single-family resident at 1372 Military Avenue in the RS8 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Pursuant to the sequel guidelines. Staff, where's yours?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Eric Azriel, Associate Planner. And this presentation was prepared for you in part by Mitchell Wexler, our new Assistant Planner. We're here tonight to talk about a use permit for a reduction in required parking in conjunction with the creation of 523 square feet of additional space. It is exempt from CEQA Class 1. This is located on Military Avenue and close to the western edge of Military Avenue. Fairly quiet road. The 6,600 square foot lot, it is zoned, single-family residential, and everything nearby is single-family residential. The project actually consists of two additions, 180 square feet in the front and 1,443 square feet in the rear. The increase from 918 square feet to 1,441 square feet requires an additional covered parking space and uncovered parking space. So the decision tonight is whether to allow for a parking reduction based on the conditions of the site. Here is the site plan. I'm going to point out a couple of things here. See if my pointer, my pointer is not working. So the length of the current driveway is 30 feet. The proposed length of the driveway would be 22 feet. And we'll get into a little bit about why that's important. This is the existing floor plan. It is a smaller house. It was built in 1946. Before Seaside was incorporated. And I will point out. Which is still not working. I will point out that the, we know that there was no garage, even though it looks like there was a garage on that left-hand side. It's shaped like a garage, sized like a garage. But there is actually a chimney there that we've gone back and looked through aerials and seen that the chimney has been there essentially the whole time. So despite it looking like there was a garage, there wasn't. And the proposed floor plan would fill out this house a little bit. We have that addition in the front. I'll just go back so you can see where the addition came in. And the addition in the back. At the bedroom, bathroom. So we're here for a parking reduction question. And as I said at the beginning, we're increasing from less than 1,201 square feet to more than 1,201 square feet, but still less than 1,800, which means that our requirement for parking is triggered to have a total of one covered and one uncovered or covered parking space on the site, total of two parking spaces. The measurements of that driveway that I pointed out in the beginning here do become important because the current driveway is 30 feet long and the front 15 feet of that driveway are in the front setback. And the driveway in the front setback cannot be used for required parking. That leaves 15 feet of driveway that can be used for required parking, which is less than the size of a parking space. All of that means that at this point, this site effectively does not have any required parking. It practically, in 30 feet, you can park one car. Again, practically, as proposed, the project would retain 22 feet of driveway, which still can park one car. So on a practical level, the parking is not changing. And here hashed in, you can see an approximate. That's, I believe, that is about 20 feet. And goes in, so that is about how far you need for one parking space for a car. So this is with the new addition. One parking space is still possible. Next, I'm going to talk about what can happen on the other side in terms of fulfilling the requirements for the two parking spaces, because this parking space does not count. So here on the right-hand side, this is showing the space that would be occupied in order to have one covered parking space and one uncovered parking space next to it. This configuration is showing what it would look like, again, approximately, to have two tandem spaces to fulfill that parking requirement. And so the question at hand is reduction of parking. The Seaside Municipal Code says it can be done if "a structure with non-conforming parking is proposed to rehabilitation and the existing structure's location, underlying parcel size, or topography, or public safety concerns render the applicable parking requirement unreasonable." So the key part that we are looking at here is whether the taking up of this amount of space on that size, given the site conditions, which I'll go to in a minute, is reasonable or unreasonable. The existing site does not provide any parking. The only that one temporary practical parking space. In order to create parking, it would require demolition of a number of features, including about a 30-foot-high retaining wall, an existing fence, sizable planter, a small greenhouse, and of the existing driveway and the existing curb cut. If this is, if this use permit is denied and the owner wants to keep the existing curb cut and driveway, they would then need to apply to the Traffic Advisory Committee and go to City Council to keep that first driveway. And that that may be approved, that may not be approved.
Will you explain that, please?
Yes. The allowance for a single-family residence of this size, on this size parcel, is for one driveway per parcel. So they are only allowed one driveway. This requirement says they have to have parking for two cars, which means they need a new driveway, because there is no physical space at the current driveway. So if they install that new driveway to meet the code, they would need to remove the old driveway. If they wanted to keep the old driveway, they would have to apply to the Traffic Advisory Committee.
So my question, I guess, if we're asking for an exception to the code to reduce the driveway or the parking requirement, why could we not also ask for an exception to the code to allow two driveway approaches on one lot?
The code in that section specifically sends it to the Traffic Advisory Committee and City Council. So it lays outside of the purview of Planning Commission, that specific, very small section of code about second driveways. And this has so far been a lot of words, so I do want to give you some visuals. Here we can do, we can see a little bit how the road drops. I'm sorry, how the house is lower than the road. Going to zoom in on the left-hand side. You can see near the truck, that gives a little bit more of a sense of how far down it goes. These are four steps down. And then looking to the right to, again, just to give you a sense of the area that we're talking about. Okay. I can't quite see it. There's that little, you're in a practice session, is blocking a couple of structures, but we can't see much of them anyhow. You can see that there's a structure there, essentially. And again, just another view of the front. For the findings, I am going to spend a little bit of time on these findings. The way this resolution has been constructed is there is a finding 2A and a finding 2B. One of those findings is for approval, one of those findings is for denial. The finding itself is, as we said earlier, "a structure with non-conforming parking is proposed to rehabilitation and the existing structure's location, underlying parcel size, or topography, or public safety concerns render the applicable parking requirement unreasonable." So that is the standard. The first finding. This is the finding that says, yes, it is unreasonable for this requirement, and so therefore we would approve the use permit. And I am going to read it because the specifics do matter and it is long. "The increase from 918 square feet to 1,441 square feet requires two parking spaces, at least one of them covered. The existing site design provides no official parking spaces. To add two official spaces, the western side of the property would need a new curb cut, demolition of the existing retaining wall, addition of more than 30 inches of fill, demolition of the existing fence, demolition of an existing 192 square foot planter, and demolition of the existing 48 square foot greenhouse. The two spaces could either be accomplished by paving almost the entirety of the western side and building a one-car carport or garage, or by extending the parking spaces deeper than the existing house, taking up the majority of the yard. If a new driveway would be created, then the existing driveway with its one unofficial parking space would need to be removed. Therefore, the parking requirement is unreasonable." That is the first version. Second version, but the same finding. This is the evidence to say that this requirement is reasonable and the use permit should be denied. "The increase from 918 square feet to 1,441 square feet requires two parking spaces, at least one of them covered. The existing site design provides no official parking spaces. The site retains sufficient space to establish a new curb cut, driveway, and covered parking on the west side of the property. Provision of the two parking stalls is not hindered by the existing structure's location as two official parking spaces can be established by construction of tandem covered parking or by constructing one covered space and providing one uncovered parking space adjacent to it. Although there are some topographical challenges, adjacent properties have constructed driveways over similar conditions. Providing the parking spaces would raise no public safety concerns. Therefore, the parking requirement is reasonable and the finding cannot be made." I do have images of the surrounding houses, if that is something you're interested in seeing. There are about five houses that were constructed very similarly. Some of them have extra parking, some of them don't, some of them have, some of them don't. All have been added to at some point or another.
Can you go back to the floor plans?
Yes.
Existing and proposed? So, and I just want to be clear on this, one of the proposed solutions is tandem parking along what would be the eastern, no, the western boundary of the house. And if we look at that on the right, it's kind of where the eight is and on up. The front bedroom has light and air, as required by code, and egress out of the front window. But if you were to put, well, let's go to the next slide, which is the future. If you were to put a structure on the right-hand side of this building, you would be blocking light, air, and egress from at least the second bedroom back there. So that solution doesn't sound like it's a viable solution either, unless it's a carport.
Yes.
But in the carport situation, you'd basically be, I guess you still have light and air, but it's, it's, it's a lot of shadow. Okay?
And there is also space for the, if we're talking about the tandem, just pull that up. That, because it's so long, we could detach it from the house. Again, just about practicality.
But again, for that to be, at least one of those spaces to be covered, that has to be carport. It's not, we're not looking at a, any kind of a garage.
Correct.
And between the house and the side property line, we do not have adequate width for two spaces, or we do? Because you did do a drawing with it, but you hatched it differently. I wanted to be clear about that.
The, in order to do two spaces side by side. One of them cannot be covered because.
In the building setback.
Exactly.
Okay. So that's an option, that one would, wouldn't cover the front window on the front bedroom. Okay, I understand. And yeah, go ahead. Questions, commissioners of staff, before we open this up?
Do you have a side view of the property of the existing house where you're proposing the driveway? Because I know we can't, if there's windows there, we could have a problem with putting driveway there.
Go to the pictures and see if one of them shows it. I'm not sure that, there we go.
So that's the side part of the yard. See, I see one window there. It might be a door. I'm not sure. How, how much distance will you have between the house and the actual parking?
It would not be very much. The entire space.
Because I know I built with the building department here, and if it's a parking structure, they will not let me put it where there's a window into the house.
Yeah, good point. Just to also get the cover in the box.
Exactly.
So. And the reason I'm getting at it is, is as we look at the reasonableness, requiring covered parking even on that side isn't viable. Now that, that side has room for parking, but it wouldn't be covered parking, I think, because we run into the issue of the windows in the bedrooms and the access and those sorts of things, so. You know, it's interesting, because most of the time when we're dealing with this situation, it's a little itty-bitty lots and there's no room for anything. You know, and this is a little different because there's actually is a little bit of space. It's just that it doesn't necessarily conform precisely to what the code says. It's going to be an exception one way or the other. Or deny, but I mean, it seems as though, got to find out what kind of exception makes sense.
And to answer your earlier question, it is 23 feet from the side of the house to the property line. Five feet of that is setback. So no structure other than something flat on the.
Looking at 18 feet.
And a parking space in a covered structure would be 10 feet wide by 19 feet long and uncovered would be nine feet wide and 19 feet long.
So you could still be eight feet away from the structure then with the parking if you had a covered one?
Yes.
Because that would be okay by code.
You'd have a tandem, you'd have to be a tandem covered standalone.
Right.
Over there.
But as long as you had that five feet or so spread between the unit that's there and the new.
Yeah.
Carport, you'd be okay. But that's the only thing that I could see that's wrong there.
Any other questions for staff before we go to the public commissioners down there? How about you down here? Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
I will bring up the recommendation, because it is not a typical recommendation. So staff recommends that you receive the presentation, consider the facts as you had been doing. And then with your motion to approve or deny, if it's to deny, you would strike finding 2A. If it's to approve, it would be to strike finding 2B.
I have a feeling with this group up here, it's going to be neither of those. It's going to be some other compromise or something. So let's, let's, let's open this to the public. Let's see what's said and then, and then we'll come back.
So the applicant is here.
That's right, yeah. So the first thing we'll do is open this to the applicant. If, if you'd like to come forward, we'll give you, we'll give you up to 10 minutes to talk. It probably more that we're going to have questions for you, so stick around. And then after that, we'll open up to the regular public, if anybody is here that wants to say that. So introduce yourself, name and everything, and then go ahead and share with us what you can.
Thank you very much for hearing us today. My name is Ryan Bassett, the co-owners, along with Megan Bassett. It's our primary residents. First, I'd like to point out that, as was mentioned, our other parking space isn't large enough to be an official parking space. We have a full-size truck with an extended cab. And we've been storing trash cans in that area that will become house, and it still has a couple of feet for the sidewalk. So I understand it's not legally a parking space, but functionally. Also, I understand the desire for having off-street parking to preserve, you know, public parking by adding an extra driveway would be permanently removing on-street parking that the neighbors would otherwise be using. We're not adding anybody else to the household, to the family. It's not an ADU. We're not bringing anybody else in. Our number of our personal cars, which is two, will not be changing. We're not looking to have additional private parking at the expense of on-street parking. As we could see in most of the images from the front of the yard, our house is set down below 30 inches below the grade of the street. So would have concerns of if we were adding in fill, how close to the house could that be? It's, you know, we couldn't go down a very steep slope to the house. Jim, would you like?
It's our contractor dish.
Yeah, I'm a contractor. Yeah. Jim Gish, contractor. Yeah. You were going to mention about if we would do that cut, then it would eliminate one parking space of, that is on the street that can be used by anybody.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the trees we're looking at were from the City of Seaside Tree Program. We looking to have minimal impervious cover on the property. We don't want to have, basically, we like to have plants in the yard, and that's what really drew us to the property was reasonable-sized house and plenty of yard that gets good bit of sun. I would rather not pave most of the usable flat, the usable flat space in the yard to give parking that. Again, there's that other space that works. I understand it's not a legally sized parking space. And then adding more spaces at the expense of on-street parking.
It does add a lot of impervious square footage.
Okay, yeah, any questions for the applicant, the contractor?
Yeah, especially when a house sits lower than the, than the street. Because we know, I live in the area and they flood uncertain. So when you talk about impervious, I would rather see you continue with your pavers and an underground infiltrator that will accept the water and give it time to go away. You don't see it, nothing. Is there any reason you don't go two-story and then you can have your drive-through that's totally within code?
The house is built in 1946 and doing a second story would be pretty much a tear-down and rebuild.
Well, yes, they are, but, but unfortunately, they were built for the military.
Yeah. We felt the floor plan of the, the designer came up with this was very functional, well, well-laid-out living space. The part that bumps out into the driveway really makes nice living space, then a reasonable-sized kitchen and bedroom in the back. Thought it was very livable and didn't look like an addition that was just kind of glued to the side of the house as some of the neighbors have. So kind of fits with existing architecture. Did other houses in the neighborhood in the style that the house was built with.
What's the structure in, in the back of the house that's the largest of the white rectangles?
That is a workshop, just an extra space. Since there isn't a garage, it's insulated.
Was that ever a space?
Time, a garage? Do we have any? No, no, that was a small shed before we moved in and I, with permits, of course, built that.
Any other questions to the applicant? All right. We'll go to public comment. We'll bring it back to us for discussion. If we have any further questions of you, you know, we'll, we'll call you up on that one. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us.
All right, at this time, we're going to open to public comment. If there's anybody wishing to comment from the public, you'd have up to three minutes to do so. There's nobody here in the auditorium, but is there anybody online? Okay. All right, then we'll bring it up back to this panel for internal discussion. And thoughts, anybody?
All right, we'll start with you.
Anybody down there?
Okay, the only problem I have when we're taking a small house like this and going to a big house is when you're no longer here and a big family moves in. That, that's why I asked you about the two-story, to make it something that would give you your legal parking and everything, but also give you the size of home that you need. And I know the tear-downs are bare because of what's in that house of when it was built. You know, it's, it's costly to have drywall, everything taken off because of what's in it. But like I said, my biggest problem with something like this is when you're taking a house and going up to 1,800 square feet.
I think it's only going to 1,400. That's.
14? I bet that.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I was going to say, take a little issue with you saying it's becoming a big house because.
I thought it was nine and nine. Like I said, fonts is free, people. Let's make this stuff big so we can read it. 275s on, and I can't read the, the fine print on this. And this might just be me. I'm an old guy.
No, no, it's small. It's small.
Okay, next year, next commissioner.
Gentlemen, anybody else over there? Mr. Evans? I, I'm just confused on one thing, Eric, and that is you've got a bunch of findings on pages 10 and 11 of the packet. But maybe I blanked. I don't remember them in the presentation.
And my apologies, I did mean to mention that. The, in the packet, the printed version of the presentation that you have, as well as the printed version that was made available to the public, the hidden slides are shown, in case there are any questions about the findings of that, but other than the key finding of number two. I did provide those, but those are findings that we typically go over fairly quickly, so I did not go over them in this instance.
So what, just distill it down for me. 2A essentially means what for that lot?
2A would be denying the use. Two A would be denying the use permit and saying that two parking spaces have to be created.
That's two A.
Two A is struck. If you can stay on the recommendations slide.
And and those two parking spots would be required, they would both have to be completely leave to code.
Yes.
And and one of them has to be covered according.
Yes. Striking to B would allow. The project to continue as proposed with no changes, which.
And what if we want to continue the project as proposed, but with a different parking requirement that still includes an exception? How would we address that?
Um, there could be a couple of ways of doing that. One of them would be if you crafted something here. That was the condition that you wanted to put in place, or it could be continued. We do have. Uh, our final deadline is October twenty-ninth.
I hate continuing projects for people who waited patiently with our bureaucratic process. I like to give them something that they can go home with. But that said. And I don't want to get ahead of you guys. So you you had some comments or questions because I have some ideas that I, you know.
You said, and I'm getting confused by the strike word that you have. So if we strike two A or strike two B, that's not what I'm asking. If we accept two A, what does that mean for that project?
I I understood, I misunderstood. So if we accept two A. Which means we're striking to B, but we're accepting to A. Uh, we'll go back to that. Oh, that's not working. Thank you. So two A is saying that last line is the key line. Therefore, the parking requirement is unreasonable. And if it is unreasonable, planning commission is reducing the amount of required parking with this use permit.
They could live with their current situation with the the part of the driveway that's. Gonna be too short once they bump out the the that front section.
Correct.
And that's they'll live with that and street parking.
Correct.
If we accept two A, if we accept two B, it's kind of really back to drawing board.
Well, but you could also accept two A. But add a condition of approval says that the the code parking requirement is unreasonable. So we're agreeing that an exception is allowed, but we're gonna add a condition of approval that says, but here's how we're gonna solve the. The the part here is an acceptable compromise.
But I haven't heard that.
Can you bring up slide that's on page nine? The thirteen area eighty military, like it says three. Three B picture?
Three B.
It's a photograph?
Yes, that's a neighboring house.
Oh, this isn't the house?
No, that's a neighboring.
So can. Jennifer, can you go and show the hidden slides, please? We'll start with the the pictures of the neighboring houses. So these were included in case you wanted to see. Houses that were constructed at a similar time and apparently of a similar style and how they have. Aged, changed over the years. So this house is pretty similar. It does have an addition evident on the right-hand side. It has that same dead-end driveway into the wall. Um, this one's a little bit harder to see. Uh, it does have something that may or may not be a garage. It's hard to tell. It's definitely not a garage door, but maybe they use it as a garage. Um, this one does have a garage clearly has been added to over the years. I believe we have one more. Uh, this one does actually has two driveways.
It's got a circular driveway.
And and so they connect. And this is our last one, which has a carport in the back.
And it's detached.
Correct. I believe that's our last one. Yes.
I I assume we have requirements on how wide these. Covered driveways have to be because the cars are a lot wider now and a lot of these were built in playback. It were not quite as wide.
I think Eric mentioned a minimum size. Nine by, you said it was not for each parking space, nine by twenty?
Nine by nineteen for an uncovered parking space, the driveway itself has to be twelve feet wide. For a one car. If it's two cars wide, it has to be sixteen feet wide.
Which is consistent with the standard garage door, double car garage door sixteen feet. All right. So I have some thoughts. May I? You know, it's interesting when we when we see these these applications and we're always always very generous in allowing people to to make things work. Not sticklers as a rule on on the parking. We also recognize that often there is practically. An additional parking space in that driveway apron, even if it's not counted officially. So I mean, I I want to start with that, but but most of the time. The lots are not nearly this wide and they don't have the space that this one affords. Uh, my my first inclination was to say, all right. Let them use this unofficial one where the driveway is and let's just put have them put a driveway with a single uncovered space on the other side. I I'm not even a stickler for whether it's covered, but Eric made the point that. To do two driveway cuts, the code is very specific that they have to go through another process with the traffic advisor. I don't want to put anybody through that. So my personal thinking is that that. Especially since the house tucks all the way to the left on that lot. And they're adding to the left and they're gonna have this beautiful entry door and they got this old ugly driveway. Uh, my thinking is take that out and just have them put two uncovered spaces on the other side. And I'd be perfectly fine with the exception of not having one of them be covered. They've got the room. There would be, instead of a ten-foot curb cut, there would now be a sixteen-foot curb cut. So they lose half of the street parking space. That's not significant. And yes, there's a slope. You gotta contend with it, but there's already a slope in their driveway that comes down. So so my thinking is that. Give them the exception that covered isn't nee- needed, the lots big enough that it can accommodate two. So let them put two in, but let them be uncovered so that they're not creating a health and safety issue with the windows and the house. And they've got more than ample space to do that. And it can even go in, you know, if it's uncovered, it can be in setback. You know, they can get away from the house a little bit. So that's my thinking and that's that seems to me that would provide a a compromise solution. Now, we haven't obviously spoken to you about that and and you might decide to change your application if we were to prove it that way. I think the other option would be that they could do two parking spaces side by side or tandem uncover. Depending on how much space they want to take up on the side yard. But I think that any solution that provides two spaces on the opposing side. Eliminates the curb cut and the the short driveway that's already there, which frankly is gonna make their entrance far more attractive anyways. Uh, I would be okay with that all day long and let them proceed with the project and we still get. Two parking spaces. Frankly, they get four parking spaces because there's gonna be two unofficial spaces in the driveway, you know, apron. Anyways, so those are my thoughts. Okay, yeah, go for it.
I agree with Chair Silva. Mainly because ninety percent of the houses I walk by that have garages are full of crap and not a car. So I'm all for allowing the the non-covered spaces. First off, it's a safety issue too. It goes away because you have windows right there and there's no problem with the car running. And have that. So I agree with your finding.
The other thing is it's a big lot and down the road, somebody might put a much bigger house there, in which case. Now you've already got a driveway, you've got a space to to get into whatever might go in there. So I I just.
Let me confirm that part of this plan would be then for the the current cut that's there on the.
To be eliminated.
That would be eliminated. So that street parking spot that's potentially lost, come back hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of what's now a ten-foot cut, you end up with a sixteen-foot cut. So you're really only losing six feet of street parking. So I mean, tha- that's my thought. And and I I just be interested in everybody's feedback here. Um, I, what I'd like to do, it's not normal, is just ask the applicant. Is that something that you could live with if we gave that as as a a condition of approval on the project?
That is not an ideal.
Yeah, come up to the, sorry, come up to the mic.
Sorry, uh, that is. Not ideal. Um, again, we with our small parking space, it fits a full-size truck perfectly fine. We like, there's there's established trees on the other side. We'd rather keep that open. Have trees, not build a new driveway one we already have.
Certainly, but you can understand our position is if the code says you gotta have two and one of them has to be covered. We could hold you to that and that would be far more onerous. I'm, we're trying to find a compromise that that. Allows us and and part of the reason is we got single-family lots that are a certain size and the code anticipates. There's room for off-street parking and you're supposed to provide it. Um, and. And the exceptions are supposed to be in the case where it's impossible to do so. You know, a variance is when, for example, an exception to variance is slightly different legally, but but a variance. Is when it simply can't be done. It's not just a preference. So, uh, you know, what I'm trying to to look at is how do we? How do we split the baby? You know, how do we do this Solomonic thing and say? Let's not hold somebody's feet to the fire on the code to the point where it's not buildable. But let's come up with something that is buildable, but still meets the objectives of the code. And. So that's, you know, that's where we're coming from. Now, I have no issue with saying it can be tandem. Or it can be side by side, however you create it, but we would eliminate the requirement for covered. So I mean, that's just where I I tend to be and I understand that that's not your preference, but at the same time, we have to uphold the code more than. Than what everybody wants, right?
Um, and is the requirement, um, if you could go back to the image with the.
And and even mind there no requirement. Yeah, this is just a discussion on some ideas.
And there are slide sixteen, the. Parking configuration plan or proposed plan.
This is the one with the red hatching on it?
Yes.
So this was.
This one. Um, yes.
Either one of those.
Um, as you can see on the left, the. I mean, that fits a full-size truck with space. Does the driveway need to be that large and that far back from the sidewalk?
Saying and what you're asking is 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 the difference between a legal parking space and a practical parking space? The code does not recognize the parking space on the left as being legal because it's in the building setback. And so, yes, sometimes when there's no other option on a lot, we we say, hey. Practically speaking, they still got to stall, even though that's not a legal one. So what we're talking about on the other side is, you know, how do we do it with a legal one? You know, I mean, something that the the commission could consider is would would be would be be we'd be okay with one legal. Off-street parking uncovered and one wink, wink, nod, nod driveway apron. So they're practically creating two, but. I mean, this is a big lot. This could potentially have. A big house. It could have an ADU and a junior ADU, could have any number of things in time. And and I understand you're not asking for that and you're only at fourteen hundred square feet, which is why I don't wanna. I don't personally want to hold your feet to the fire on following the full code because it would mean you'd have to redesign the house in a way that's gonna be too expensive. Yeah, and yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm I'm somewhat gratified to see this conversation because we talked a lot about this one as staff and. I think one of the big challenges with this one is, first of all. Um, it's outside of our authority to let them keep the existing driveway and add another driveway. And two, what they're really asking for is they don't want to put in that second driveway. Right? The covered or the uncovered, what they really don't want to do is eliminate that greenhouse and create that. Create that a second, I mean, am I speaking correctly? That that's why you're here, right? Is you don't want to put in the second driveway. That's. Yeah, that that's the request essentially and. We, we looked at, like you were saying, is there a a way to split the split the baby? And we really struggled doing that. Um, if we could come up with a way to do it, we would have certainly recommended that and. As such, I say that you guys won't come up with one on your own, but I just wanted to point that out that that's. Really sort of the key question is, it's really, it is really hard to split this. Because what they want is to not put any driveway over on that side. That's what they're asking for. And that really kind of comes back to a up or down question as is it reasonable? For them to do that, or or more appropriately, is it unreasonable to require them to do that? I just wanted to throw that out there and how how we got to how we as a staff, how we arrived at. Not have a recommendation, which is obviously, I think, I haven't I haven't done this in a long time.
And and I think one of the challenges too is is they're asking to enlarge the house, which increases the parking requirement. And to go from one parking spot to zero legal parking spots. So that. That's not something we would normally consider for another applicant. We have always been willing to to go. And and be reasonable, like, okay, yeah, you've only got one space, but not down to zero while you're also getting the house bigger. Um, I I know that if it was my property, frankly, I'd want the approach on that side because God forbid I, or you're not God forbid. If I ever needed to get into the backyard to build something or whatever, having an approach that goes around that side would be great. I understand there's a greenhouse. And so that's something to consider. Yes, commissioner.
First off, Andy, before you go, what is the setback from center curb for this? Is it the standard twenty feet back?
I believe it's twenty feet from property line. Or is this a fif- fif- the front yard setback?
The front yard setback is fifteen.
Oh, it's fifteen.
Okay.
And and what is the distance? So it's twenty feet to the house and the fifteen is the dash line that we see there?
Correct.
And then do we know what the distance to the face of the greenhouse is from the street?
I may have that. No, I'm afraid I do not have that.
Yeah, the greenhouse is this this building here. And is the greenhouse on a foundation? So the perimeter foundation?
And that greenhouse is that small one that's not yet covered. Uh, Jennifer, could you, oh, there we go. And the wire, the building that just got covered with this screen.
Oh, okay.
That's the greenhouse.
What is the forward? What is the forward rectangle that's part half covered right now? Number twelve.
It's about a two-hundred-foot square foot planter.
Oh, it's just a, it's just a planting bed. Got it. Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay.
Sorry.
I thought that was a structure, so we're just talking about a planting bed there. So it's a raised planter or something like that? Okay.
And, uh, if I may, I also wanted to, uh, say that the current parking is zero. And the proposed parking is zero, so there's no reduction in parking.
There was an extra. Ten feet or so or five, eight feet where where that addition is gonna be extended?
Correct, eight feet. So it goes from thirty feet long, which is not enough for two cars, to twenty-two feet long.
Okay.
Which is still long enough for one car.
For one car. All right, thank you. I think we need to come back here and deliberate amongst ourselves that. If if that had been the greenhouse at the forward position, I would have said, yeah, go ahead. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, just on that. If you put in a single driveway, what did you call it where it's in line?
The tandem?
Tandem. How close can something like that be to the property line?
Well, if it's covered, it has to be five feet, but you can actually be, I think, closer if it's uncovered.
Oh, if it just went in. And if in the future, somebody just say they sold it or they decided, um, they want to do like a bigger addition at that point. Just saying if we went with the smaller parking option. Uh, wouldn't it be required at that time then or not? Like if they, you did it, however.
What what would happen is that if an exception is approved, whatever the character of that exception and the conditions of that exception are approved. Those run with the land until somebody and 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 they can be non-conforming like they would be now. They run with the land. Until somebody comes and applies for a permit to do something else that would trigger revisiting that.
I've got it. Okay, cool. That's all I had.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
We're, we're doing this project because we love the property. We're not planning on, we're planning on retiring this house. I'm sure.
You know what? Since there was this online, come to the microphone and.
I'm sorry, I'm sure every homeowner says the same thing, but we're doing this project because we love the location. We love the house. We're hoping to retire in this house. We're not. I know you're thinking in the very long term, but we're not flipping this. We're.
Understood. I I understand that and and we're not even thinking in the long term. We're thinking of the fact and and. Understood. I I understand that and and we're not even thinking in the long term. We're thinking of the fact and 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 just so you understand this, this is not ever ever a personal thing and we have we have folks that come here. That are emotionally against projects that are emotionally for projects. We have to sift through what the code says and we have to dispassionately. Treat everyone the same and we can't give favoritism to one party over another and the code says specific things and there are times where. Our hands are bound by the law. We are allowed to make exceptions, but in this case, that exception. Needs to be something we can hang our hat on and needs to be consistent with the kind of exceptions we give to other people. And so if we make an exception to you and set precedent that's never been done before by this body and somebody else comes along and says, well, oh, you did it over here. We got it. And that's not a position we can be in. We have to be treating the code as reasonably as possible. And so that's where, you know, I'm not. I mean, we could be hardliners and say. Code says you gotta have. You know, one covered and one uncovered and they have to be legal parking spaces. We're not even considering the approach or the apron section. And we could hold you to that. And I think, you know, our position is we want to be good neighbors and we want people to be able to do. Reasonable things with their land while we also comply with the code as much as possible. And come up with something that's going to be beautiful and beneficial to the whole community. And realistically, when there aren't sufficient off street parking spaces. Um, it it does impact the neighborhood. Um, you you may not, that just may be the two of you guys, but you know, we have other households where people have six cars and. You know. If 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 you got two off street. And you got two maybe that aren't legal because they're the the apron, all of a sudden that helps things a lot and 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 I'll. I'm I'm the first to acknowledge that, you know, when I had all kid, all four of my kids at home, um, there was a season when we had six cars. And yeah. Parking in my cul-de-sac was not always easy. So I mean, I get it. Um, all right. Well, thank I thank you and we appreciate where you're coming from completely. Um, but at this point, we're going to go ahead and close the the public comment. We're going to bring it back to 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 us and we have to make then a decision that.
I do.
We can live.
Yes, okay. I know these variances are tough. You know? And that's why the chair gave you a out to where it could be within the code. And that's what we have to look at is the code here. If there is a possibility to follow the code, that's what we need to do. You know, sat up here for a long time and believe me, a lot of people leave very happy, a lot of people not so. But our whole job is the code. That's all we can go by because that way we are not partial. We're one hundred percent upfront with everybody to come in. And so that's why. I would like to, for me to push this through, I would like to see. To where you could put the parking to make it legal. And there is a way to do that. That's how. That's how I look at the planning commission. That. We're here to. Upkeep the code if we can and you have. An opportunity to keep up the code without a variance and then there's nothing tagged to the house later. Even if you did, you know, like you, I plan to die in my house. Well, not in my house, because. I don't think the wife would like to live there if I did that, but anyways, that's that's my opinion. And we're gonna have to, to some degree.
Uh uh approve some exception to the code, but we have to try to get, I think, close to where it possibly.
I understand your your suggestion is we're not totally upholding the code. We're. We're partially unfolding it, but you know, for example, striking the. Covered parking, you know, would not be to the code, but the code wants us to do that one spot. So. I I think, you know, it's a good compromise. I. I don't see any suggestions that have come out are better than the one that. We put forward.
So i- if if you guys are open, I'm gonna I'd like to make a a pass at um uh um. A motion. Can we get um finding two A uh please? Think it's okay, here we go. Hold on. Two A. So this is the one that says that the code is unreasonable in the in this case for their conditions, correct? So we would be. Agreeing. With this code. Well, okay, we got to strike someone. So see. But I'm gonna struggle. Okay. So part. And to be clear, part of the part of the motion is to accept one of the findings?
And that is correct. If you wanted to provide a modified finding, we would need sufficient information in order to have that written.
Understand. So we need to wordsmith. This so that we have the content. Do you do we have a copy of this finding bigger that I could edit on?
Yes, it is in the staff report.
Is?
I'll get you the packet page, uh packet page thirteen.
I don't have printed the whole.
Oh.
Oh, this?
Oh, there's only one packet.
Yeah, the little the little ones is too tiny for me.
Eric, while he's doing that, I just have a quick question on uh. Two A and two B. And I think this is where my confusion came in. The the terminology on the left hand side of that. Page is identical and I'm wondering if two B is supposed to say render the applicable parking requirement reasonable. Both of them say unreasonable.
Two B.
See the last.
The. Uh, can you advance the? Here we go.
Got it. I got it. You want a pen?
He'd like a pen too.
So.
I think you might have. I'd be looking at two copies of the same page.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking is finding two A and finding two B, not the the. Other stuff, all the version.
Yes, that so.
Say reasonable.
Finding two A and two B is in two parts. There is the finding itself, which is the part in bold, which is the part you're referencing. Then there is. Uh, that is what has to be met in order to approve the use permit. And then the part that is in italics is the evidence.
So done. That's ignore that and just do this basically. I was trying to figure out which one to try to use to make the chair's effort easier. I think he's on the right path.
Basically, in one case, we're making the finding and therefore we can approve the use permit. And then the other case, the finding cannot remain and therefore we cannot.
I think.
And in in order to approve a reduction of parking of any kind. Finding that finding has to be made.
The finding has to be that it's unreasonable.
Correct.
Okay, either way. Got it.
And also bear in mind that it is possible. To.
Bear in mind, it is possible to leave the finding as written and modify the conditions.
Okay, but but.
If i- i- if the revised condition is consistent with the finding, then the finding can remain as written.
The issue is that the finding says that the reasons that it's unreasonable. Is that you have to pave the western side and we're saying, yes, pave the western side. The finding says it's unreasonable because you have to uh do a curb cut. And we're saying, yes, you still would have to do a curb cut. So. Those elements of the finding would be inconsistent with the proposed solution that we're trying.
I'm just throwing it out there as a general concept.
But I mean, do you think? So I don't I don't see how that would work in 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 the case where you're saying.
If you're looking at just eliminating the covered portion of it.
Yes.
Then I agree, we probably need to modify the finding.
And that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I was just throwing out there that. Yeah.
Look, the the language for a condition is easy. It's 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 modifying the finding so that we aren't. Leaving something in there that's contradictory to what the condition would say. Um. Yeah, unfortunately, the language is really tricky on this one unless we come up with a completely new finding. I think this is the way to do it.
For the record, this is what our typical work table looks like.
I understand. Yeah, but we expect it.
Oh, well, yeah.
Let me give it a pass. Are we recording and taking notes in this? Because I'm not writing it all down.
We've got pens. We've got the thing right here. We're ready.
Unless somebody else wants to be a scrivener here as well. All right. Okay, so I want to make a motion. That we. Approve that we. That we accept a modified. Finding two A. As follows. Where it says evidence. The increase from nine hundred and eighteen square feet to one thousand four hundred and forty one square feet requires two parking spaces. At least one of them covered. The existing site design provides no official parking spaces. To add two spaces with one of them being covered. Would create. An unsafe. Situation with a. Covered parking structure adjacent to. Habitable bedrooms. Period. Therefore, the parking requirement is unreasonable. The motion would go on to, motion would go on. To approve of the use permit. With the condition. That the applicant provide two. Uncovered parking spaces. In the configuration of the applicant's choosing. And. That. The original. Driveway approach. Be removed. And the original driveway be removed. And the sidewalk be restored in that location. Yes, sir. Did I leave anything vital out?
We we would also need to strike finding to be.
And we would strike finding to be. Okay, so that's my motion. Okay, do we have? Any further discussion? Okay. Take a two vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. As amended. That was the most work we've done on one of these in a long time. All right, with that said, um, we're gonna move.
Feel hard?
What's it? Oh, yes, sorry. An appeal shall um. Somebody objects to this. They can appeal. An appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the day, date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the city council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. Okay. And and if I can just add for the applicant, I understand this isn't exactly the outcome you wanted, but I would also like to congratulate you on approval for your project. It's a big deal to get the approval. I I was very particular to say in the configuration of your choosing. You guys can work out the design that works best to create two uncovered parking spaces. Okay, um, and we leave it to you on that. All right, so. Appreciate your working with us on this. Um. Next item of business is six B. And we understand we're gonna um continue this item until which? Meeting?
This October twenty second.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we continue item six B. To the regularly scheduled um meeting of the planning commission on October twenty second.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I got my paperwork out of order and I do not know what the rest of the agenda is. Um. Okay, that puts us to reports from commissioners. Do we have any reports from commissioners?
I have one question for Scott. The house on North Grove, the big two story one. What's going on with that?
It just seems to sit a lot and nothing happens for days and days and days.
No, 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 I'm talking the ream house.
Oh, the ream house.
Yeah, but it just seems to sit there. I noticed they finally got a wall up and stuff, but I'm just curious is what's going on. Why isn't it?
You know what the address is?
Uh. I don't like your. I can see it's the big white one that looks like a hospital. But I was just curious like what's taking so long.
So it's a new build on Orde Grove?
They tore the house down. They came in front of us. They tore the house down and then they built for the daughter and her husband kids.
Don't remember which one that was on Orde Grove.
As you're going down.
Yeah. After you finish the dip. And you flat out. You can't. There's one white house that has on top of the garage is sun deck room, but then the next white house is a two story. And but it's just been sitting and it seems like what's going on.
I I've heard. Is there the kid patrol? It's that's that was his house?
I couldn't tell you his house because Mr. Reeve came in to.
Yeah, sure. Sure, you know, we watched these ones on the project and.
This is the daughter and son-in-law?
This, no, this, yeah, this, the son.
No, it's the his, it's his daughter.
It's his daughter?
Yeah, the son, the son is uh.
So.
For my daughters.
I I mean, I know the daughter and son-in-law, but I haven't seen him in a while, so.
Yeah, the son-in-law is the guy.
Okay.
His daughter is. Or or his wife, I guess you call. But I was just curious just why it just sits there and. Well, I think that it will be pushing for a finish.
It's not on our radar. I can. I can try to love. I I don't know the answer. I'm not familiar with that property.
That's me.
Um, I was just curious. There's an apartment complex. I think it's at the end of Wanda.
I think you talk about C, perhaps there's C Bridge or whatever.
I think it's Wanda. I I remember looking at it because it it had like a, it was like a a. Two story, two unit place and it had a, I think, a three car garage on it. Um.
Uh, West.
I don't remember. Um, I think it was, maybe it's not one. It's not one. Shoot.
Very good.
No. Okay, anyways, it doesn't matter. I was just wondering if that was somebody was putting um uh an ADU in that garage. I I looked at it. As an investment property myself and somebody else bought it and and. You know, my my idea for it was get a three car garage on a two unit. Building and and given the current. Um. Um. State laws, it would be a logical place where you could add a unit. All under roof. I was just curious if that was what was happening because I I had seen there was some activity on it. But I don't remember. Maybe I had the wrong street.
Yeah, I'd have to go look it up.
No big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Any other reports from commissioners?
I just got one more. I talked to you. When we got together with the estate people for that seven hundred or whatever it was, but um. We okayed right across from the little grocery store on Noche Blaine and San Pablo. I believe it is. They completely put a fence in front of the double, but in front of the garage, so you can't use the garage and all that. I I was curious as why we allow that to happen.
Yeah, that was a, yeah, that, yeah. Right down the corner.
Yeah, but you look at it, it's like, well, now you have a garage that you can't use the garage and that was part of the the building to make. Yeah, but you look at it, it's like, well, now you have a garage that you can't use the garage. And that was part of the, the building to make a two-story is to have a garage.
So there's no garage door? They put a fence?
The garage is stored there, but there's a big.
Fence across the driveway.
That you couldn't get anything in there.
Well, maybe they weren't supposed to do that. We need to have code enforcement take a look.
That is the one that's going up.
No, this one's done.
Oh, this one. It's done now?
Yeah.
It's right in that corner, but.
If you're talking about La Salle and Noche Plena, they did a uh. An ADU right there, but I swear they don't have the five feet clearance. You know, it just, if you're a taste that we don't stick the same to everybody.
We're ADUs per state law, it's four feet.
Oh, it's four feet?
Yeah.
How could they beat our laws, our codes?
They're bigger than us.
I just don't understand that. I really don't.
Yeah, they're bigger than us.
Well, for this year, see what happens.
All right, how about any um, next, uh, reports from staff?
I have no reports.
Making a motion to adjourn? No, wait, do we have an announcement from you or something?
Well, I didn't want to.
Oh, come on.
I'll be resigning from the planning commission. Maybe a leave of absence for a bit, but um, until I find out, but right now, this is my last meeting. So if I find out what's going on.
Well, the reason I wanted on the record, so we can sing your praises publicly, so that everybody knows how awesome you have been. And I have to say that when I joined the planning commission, because I've been here less time than most everybody, except for a few down there. Um, but you, you, you have always been a class act. Terry um presided over this group with incredible. Dignity and respect and you handled everything. You're very professional about everything and um, you know, but you couldn't. Serve on a regular basis, um, you know, big shoes to fill and. Followed up behind you. So appreciate you and and you know, what what I've said before about this body is. Even when we have different opinions between us on this group and we may vote apart. Um, that happens seldom, but but even when we do, it's always so respectful. Everybody gets along. Everybody respects why other people might have a little differing opinion than that. And uh, I I've appreciated that because I don't think that that. Quasi-political political organizations always operate that way. And I'm, um, and so, you know, and you set that precedent between one when I got, so.
Well, I was lucky because I was brought in by Mary Rubio and Jerry Smith. And you learned how to present yourself, which unfortunately, we don't see that. Right? You're fired or whatever.
Or canceled.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a shame because no matter what, our democracy is made on opinions. And that's what makes this place special. If I didn't believe in the planning mission, I wouldn't have been here for one years. But unfortunately, life has a way of throwing curveballs at me. And so I talked with uh. I don't have any brain fart, Mr. Myrie. And um, I will hang on until I find out, but I probably won't be in meetings. I can't drive anymore until I'm told I can. So I just have to stay home for a while.
Well, you are appreciated here. And I don't want to be the only one to say that. I know that everybody here feels that way, so. Um. No, no, no. And we, we hope that it'll, you, you are here again soon. Um, you know, and and. Given that everybody's fighting over these seats, you know.
This all started in two thousand and five. And I've watched for appropriate time that I could slide out that it would make, and I have never seen it. Until now, when the last chair down here got filled.
But yeah, Danny's still.
We can't count on that chair.
No.
See, and so I have to look at, do we have a form? And so I want to make sure, because I believe in the plan. I believe in codes. I was a builder. And I did, I did a lot of big multi-million dollar projects. And if it wasn't for code. We would be seeing, just like you're seeing in these places that are flooded and everything's washing out of the buildings and stuff. But it doesn't need to be that.
And you know, to that point, and to that point as well, I could, another thing I appreciate about this group is. We don't play favorites. We follow the code. We try to be steady and consistent and dispassionate when people are upset or when they're happy. We, we, we really have been steady about being consistent in things and and I'm, um, I I've seen. That not be the case, both in political organizations, but also in like homeowners associations. Where you get, you know, you get people who play favorites and they don't follow the rules. It's like. No, 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 no. I I appreciate our homeowners association because it's not like that, but I, you know, I managed an HOA company for a while. And there's some people who serve on HOA board to treat it like it's their little, their little feedom and they, you know, they, they, you've. You know, they do the projects that they want, not what is for everybody. And you know, unfortunately, that 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 had, that happens out there. And it has not been the case here. We're not selfish. We're not, you know, uh, petty. There, you know, none of that happens.
My dad taught me one thing that could never be taken. Your word, right? And just like we've said, we've had people badger us out here in this infield. And it just comes down to, I'm sorry, but we have to follow the code. Unless we're toward in a different direction, then we have to, just like tonight, right? But it just comes down to always be honest, stating the fact that what it is and um. You know, don't fight with one another. We all have our own opinions. That's why we have the board we have, because we need the opinions. Well, you know, it took me almost twenty years to get this jacket. I'm just teasing, guys. Well, I just. Been a good run. I've learned a lot. And I have to say, I've met some people that put me here. You know, they were great people for the city. Well, Ralph, Ralph and I go way back to high school. But Jerry Smith was somebody that I came across, was this four-door came across because him and I hit the pavement. To make sure that building would happen with the city, people with the city. And you see how well that happened, huh? And. And you sat down, the pro- the property that you guys are at was supposed to be a lot less. And it just went through the roof. And I'm sorry, I don't see the same way other people see. Your word is your word. And when you go against it, what do you have? So anyway, it's been a good run. I uh, I enjoy it. It keeps your mind occupied too, so your mind's trying to sabotage you constantly. But it is what it is, and I will let you know as soon as I know it.
Appreciate it. Well, that's in the record. Say how much we appreciate you. And and we hope that you are, you are back amongst us in short order.
I just hope to be back on the skirt.
Well, Andy, do we need to, we need a motion to adjourn? No, no, we were talking first, so.
Mr. Silva's.
I moved to adjourn.
One, one second.
Wait, one second. What do you got, Andy?
Oh, I was just gonna, I was waiting for you to finish adjourned.
Oh, do you want us to adjourn first and then you say something? Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.